Good evening, everybody.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, which stands under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Just a few quick announcements. Senator Ann Gobie's representative will hold office hours from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. tomorrow, April 20th, in the banquet room in the town hall. Do you mind if we pass over the reports on the warrants signed?
That's fine.
Okay, great, thank you.
No problem.
Could I get a motion to take certain items out of order?
Sure. Okay, tell me which one you want.
Just, just, we'll just do a general vote.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to take certain items out of order.
All right, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we have to wait until 6:30 for the poll hearing, so let's start with general discussion. Keep Lynn for possible senior center. Brenda, did you have information that you wanted to talk to that item? What's that? I'm sorry? Come out up to the, if you would, Kermit, and introduce yourself, even though we all know you. Would you have a seat?
Oh, you want a seat? Okay.
Yeah, please. Thank you. Please and thank you, sir. That's...
What is it?
Mister...
Did he say something?
He did.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I expect that. I guess a couple people have asked me to talk about the possibility of a lot between Lawrence Extension and Hayden possibly going up for...
It's Lincoln Street Extension.
Lincoln Street.
Yeah, you said Lawrence.
And Lawrence, thank you, Linda. And possibly going up to auction. And they thought that that might be a possible site for a senior center. First, let me step back. This property going up for auction, I think I'd like to commend the select board, the town administrator, the assessors, the tax collector, who are doing a pretty good job of processing some of the delinquent properties we have and foreclosed properties we have. And that's been a long time coming, and they've been doing a good job doing that. I would recommend that they not put that on auction at this point, because I'm not sure that's the best site for a select, a senior center. But there really needs to be a group of people to sit down and talk about the wants and needs of the seniors and the community. Is that the right site? Are there alternative sites that might work if they decide that there's a need for a senior center? Could you use that site for not only a senior center but multi-use facility, perhaps, a community center? So I think you need to take an inventory of the properties that might be available for that. There's also, you ought to consider a possibility of that site being used for something more beneficial to the town than a senior center. And I don't know if that's feasible or not, but I think it worthy of study. I look back at the police station, and there was a lot of pre-investigation, going to visit sites, going to talk to other communities, and talking about cost and options and so forth. And that added value, and we were able to come up, after many, many years of building a police station, at a very reasonable price. And so I think that it behooves the town to take into consideration and to take a look at those options. And you can't do it between now and, I think the auction is in August.
Yeah.
So I don't think it would harm the town, if you could delay that for another year or something, to look at the options for that property. I mean, I'd hate to sell it to a little bidder who decides to build some sort of inappropriate piece of property there. So I'm here to say, just tonight, was to say, could you please consider holding off an auction and put together a group of people, could be appointed, could be just a group of people, to evaluate the options for that site. Any questions? Okay, thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thanks for bringing it forward, Brenda. Thank you for sending the email to talk about it. I know we mentioned it in passing, I think, last meeting. Kelly, do you have handy, or could you have Amy put together a package on what the current tax delinquency, like what's the debit on the books right now for that property? And do we have something from Al about what the actual property value is? You know, just to understand what we're looking at and to be able to take that as part of the consideration. Do you know when we...
She has it in a spreadsheet, so it should be very easy to access.
Okay. When's our deadline for deciding what goes into the auction and what doesn't?
When you post the auction.
Okay. Do you know...
When we, when we're prepping for the auction, we need to know ahead of time what we're going to be offering, and then it would be part of the notification that goes out.
And do you know what kind of timeline that Amy is going to need in order to do that notification?
So what we've done in the past is we've hired an auctioneer that covers all of that. They take care of all of the postings, and we give them a list. So prior to hiring them, we just need to know.
Okay.
It's not a hard and fast rule, and they'll need to do some prep work. It's a great system. It's a self...
Self-funding.
Self-funding. It's a self-funding auction, because the fees for the auctioneer come out of the auction itself.
Okay.
So it's not, like I said, it's not hard and fast. We can get the information, and then you can have pretty much wait up until the posting to decide.
Linda, what are your thoughts?
I would say you've got at least two or three months, because we're talking about early summer, late spring.
Okay.
Auction.
Yeah, if we're talking about a, if we're talking, well, did you say August was when we're targeting the auction?
No.
I was hoping closer to June, but that being said, there's no fun in holding those pieces out, because there will be another auction.
Yeah. I mean, that's kind of where I'm sitting right now, is, and go ahead.
No, I feel the same way, holding those pieces out.
Yeah, I mean, especially where we've got this process going, I'm presuming it's going to be ongoing now that we've got it going.
And it's no, I don't think it's really any big rush, you know, and, you know, to hold off on those properties, you know, because like we've got to, you know, do some discussing, like Kermit had mentioned, to get some people together and figure out, you know, really if that would be a good place to put the property, you know, put a senior center or whatever else we'd be putting over there.
Yeah, I agree completely. There's absolutely no reason to put those on the upcoming auction. There are plenty of properties that are going up for sale. There are a lot more that will be coming out of the process of clean court with a clean bill of health that we'll be doing again. So hoping to make this an annual event until people pay their taxes. We don't need to.
We haven't had an auction since back in the 80s, when we sold a crock property out on 148. So that was the last time we had an auction on the prop, on properties.
So do you want to make a motion to hold these out for...
Yeah. Okay. I would like to make a motion to hold out certain properties, like Lincoln Street Extension properties, until we have another option here in the community.
Okay, so let me just, let me just restate it. So your motion is that we should withhold the parcels that are five Lincoln Street Extension, eight Hayden Avenue?
Yeah, five Extension, okay. And what, what Hayden Avenue?
It was eight Hayden Avenue.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to hold out from auction would be five Lincoln Street Extension and eight Hayden Avenue.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
So we're going to hold those for now, until we figure it out. So as part of that discussion, do we have five people that would be willing to serve as the committee to review that site for, because five seems to be kind of like the ideal level of being able to get a quorum together, but also be able to get two people in a room talking to one another without having a quorum? So do we actually have five people in the room that want to, want to be part of that decision process? Absolutely.
As Kermit made the telephone call to talk about the topic, it just refreshed my memory with respect to open space and master plan.
Okay.
And so I'm almost thinking that if you're going to, certainly, if there are five people that would do this on a short-term basis, to kind of provide some guidance, that we look to the master plan committee to see if those people would actually volunteer for the larger master plan activity, so that we could get that going, so that we could have a more comprehensive view of the different properties and the different opportunities that we have.
Who was, who was standing on that committee last week? I don't think it, hasn't that quite...
My department tended to speak about it. So I'm just thinking that if you're going to turn this topic in terms of short-term capability, what could have been possible, but if it's something that we're going to have to do, we need to continue and we need to look to master plan.
My perception is we're a lot better than we are today.
Yeah, well, I'm not.
No. And that's not, that's not directed at you, it's all of us, like...
And get that moving along and go from there. So get the answers that need to be made, we can start the research.
It's not a bad idea. The challenge is, is, like I said, if you can do a better job at, I'd almost rather make the headline, say, evaluate this, use the master plan as part of the criteria.
Sure.
Right? And then when we're done on this topic, ask those same people to continue to work against the master plan to... Because I think it's, I think it's a good point that we should be looking at this in terms of the old master plan. We need to do a refresh. Kelly, we had the discussion last meeting, we need to do a refresh on the master plan in order to be eligible for certain grant applications, correct?
That was the discussion, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, so it fits with that.
So it would fit with that, even if we were doing it a piece at a time, kind of like 10% inventory instead of 100% inventory, if we do a sampling plan. So, yes, sir. You can yell at this point.
People will be against it, or those, you know, if you look at properties like that and say, is it feasible to put that property in? We could put together five people together. They may not be here tonight, Beth.
No, I know.
But we could put together, present it to the select board for their review and a game plan. And a timeline, we need to get back. I'm not dragging this name out of the pie.
So I said what I said facetiously, because this is more bodies than we've seen in this room in a long time, so please, please, you know, I was saying it a little bit facetiously, but if we could get three out of the five out of this room, it would be an exciting thing, frankly.
Because I saw some hands that said...
Yeah, and I saw some hands, so...
I don't know who's sitting behind me.
So...
So I would suggest that the people that are on that committee may at least review the old master plan, even though it's not valid at this time.
Correct.
Just to get a scope of, you know, what the impact would have.
Beth, can you tell me who was speaking, please, because we have a chance to hear these people on?
Okay, so the last two people speaking were Kermit Eaton and Don Taft.
Okay. Yeah, you don't have to turn the computer, just tell me who they are.
Maybe they can identify themselves.
So in just, with respect to the master plan, there was an inventory of the master plan, is it, or, you know, an inventory of the master plan, is it... So I think that's, so you said, that the one, that you want to continue to work on as we've come, so we need to, 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 to take it down.
So... I tell you what, why don't we do this? Why don't we take, get anybody who's here today that's interested in serving, we'll do the appointment next. And if you guys can find... If you'd like to find the mix that you're describing, including one naysayer, I think that would be a really good idea. View is on it? No, that's what I said. I said, let, if you want to bring, if you want to bring a list of names to the next meeting, I think we're actually meeting next week. Is that, is that two shows during the time, or is it a week? But I think what I'd, what I'd like to see for this, in a perfect world, right, is we get names together for next week. I think we give the committee eight weeks? Eight weeks? Two months? To review the property and give a recommendation about whether it's an appropriate property or not?
Next week, we will give a timeline?
Sure.
Eight weeks, eight weeks is...
Okay.
To do a, so, tell us a year of...
Okay. Okay, so... That's absolutely fair. Either next meeting or, what's our next, Brenda?
We're going to decide tonight.
Tonight.
I guess, well, I don't know how much you get done, whether you want to hold them even next week or not. There's two ones, five, three, make errors next week.
Let's plan for the five to a meeting. Give you a couple weeks to get the right people together, or what you do? Okay.
Six thirty.
What's that? It is 6:30, so, yep, that's okay. So you guys can bring forward a, a slate, we'll call it that. I think, since we're talking about annual auctions, technically, you would have a year to get the study, a year from today to get the study done, and then the property could go on the next auction, and we're going to do that. So, but to be honest, I think if that's what the goal we know by like February or March of next year, sure. We did, we already voted to ta, we voted to keep, we voted to keep the property off. We don't have, we don't have to really vote on the committee, because we're not appointing people tonight, and I think we have discussion to discuss, so... Please give your name and what you're here for.
All right, my name is Andrea Marks. I'm here for National Grid. Brookfield, the town of Brookfield wants to widen the roads out here. I wanted to do that. We need to move, want to move three feet into the road currently. We need to put stub pole across the street for proper guidance, and the pole actually down the road, we're moving six feet, we don't even, because it's within the 13. So at the right, today, we're just petitioning to put stub pole across from pole two.
Kelly, is there anything specific we have to read in order to open the poll hearing? She's muted. Okay, so do we have any abutters present besides myself? Are you representing churches in a butter? Okay. I was actually glad to see you over this. So at this time, do we, go ahead. Okay. So just to describe it, let's see here. One of them has to be moved three feet, correct? And then the other is four feet? And both of those for a period of time are going to be basically in the parking spaces on that side of the road, correct? Do you have any, any objection or concern that you want to address?
So for National Grid, it wouldn't be too much of the, I believe that he's from the town, he's actually just going to put, they're working area around the pole, because that was another thing that we kind of wanted to bring up tonight, like, that is pretty National Grid, she doesn't want to be responsible for the pole in the middle of the road. If he gets hit, then obviously we replace it. But he needs to check that pole, so he is, area around the pole. I'm pretty sure he said that the construction was going to start within a couple of months after the petition, but in order for them to tear off the sidewalk, they need to use that pole. The sidewalk is deep right where the pole is, so it's, it's a wide, so as long as it takes them to pretty much set the top of the sidewalk. Okay.
What grid is that, for, for doing the work for the pole?
Under a year? No, that's, no, it's, it's usually six to seven weeks after we'll do the petition, then it goes to scheduling, but then usually within six to seven weeks, they'll move the pole.
So like July, maybe?
Yeah.
Would you say maybe move it?
Yeah.
So the project's going to start in July?
Yeah.
So by the time the pole gets moved, we might not even have a...
Exactly, yeah.
Maybe.
Yeah, that's the thing, we don't really know the, I mean, sometimes with storms and everything, we don't, I've seen poles in two weeks, but I've seen poles in six months. So it's kind of, they say six to seven weeks, though, that's the timeline.
Okay. All right, so... Are there any other abutters with questions regarding this action? Okay. So it sounds like, in a perfect world, if we hit the six to seven week mark, so please, if you can, at least communicate that.
Yeah, yeah. I can definitely put a date in there.
Yeah, is that, is that we really need it to start, we need it to be completed within six to seven weeks, because we really need that work done in order for the rest of our road project to commence appropriately.
Yeah.
And not have it turn into a domino effect getting in the way of the project, so. Anyone else have comments or concerns or questions regarding it?
So the water department is starting a project, the water main.
Correct.
They will be mobilizing next week. Construction will start, and maybe on site next week, to be done in July. So just want to be sure that that doesn't impact the water department work at all.
Do you know if the, any of the water main work is running that same side of the road as where the pole's at?
Basically down the middle of the road, but they will also be doing levels, I mean, I don't know where the water goes in.
We've got church on Sunday, every Sunday, and so if we're going to be down, down the middle of the road, I mean, people have to realize that as we progress with this, that we've got a bunch of interests that are important, and having access to the church is important.
Right.
So again, I think between water and highway, we've got to make sure that the Central Street, at the end of the Central Street, needs to be accessible for folks to get in. I mean, they've got AA on Wednesday nights, and again, trying to get to the back of the church, so we need to make sure that we're not encumbering that capability.
I was going to talk about the project.
During the poll hearing?
Until highway started, but I wanted to be sure that, you know, National Grid knew about the water project. We'll talk about the water project when Ryan gets up, okay?
Okay, great. So are we free to, so we have no one that objects, so I think all we need to do is close the poll hearing at this point. So we're going to close the poll hearing as of 6:43. Okay. That's right, because I'm an abutter. So the next thing on the agenda is the highway discussion. Oh, thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Thanks for your time. Now, actually, we don't have the, we don't have most of the, we don't have at least one of the parties for some of the highway discussion, so why don't we go over what you want to discuss? And then I'll go over the part that I want to discuss for the poll hearing.
Does, does he want to touch on the project first, or?
Yeah, that's not on the agenda.
Never mind.
Yeah, gotcha. Yeah, gotcha.
So that's the actual margin.
Okay.
This is, this is a way that we kind of modified what we wanted. And this is also pretty much how we're working, but on a much more.
Okay. I think this is a good start towards what we were asking for.
Okay, good.
I think, I think it's a good way to.
Okay.
One of the things I would like us to do, though, is to identify. Because we do do a lot.
Yeah, that's not going to be hard to do, we did most of the time, make a decision on if you're going to do something in-house or send it out.
Yeah, if we can, if we can start collecting kind of that information that people, that way people, we've got a certain level of transparency of, hey, yes, we do do a lot of maintenance. And I think there may be a little bit of lack of understanding of when you've got all the hydraulics and all the things that go into this equipment. And a lot of it's got like recycled equipment on top of new frames and the stuff that goes into that. I think that there's a, it wouldn't hurt to do some education. But this is the, this is the type of like level of detail that I was looking for, pretty much.
Good, good.
And now the other half of it, though, because I sent you two things. I sent you this.
Yeah.
And then I sent you kind of the, like, and I had to, I had to file the serial numbers off of it because it's from one of my own project plans at work. That's, this is a real project plan that actually gets stuff done. And there's the one I give to my executive team that keeps it simple enough that they kind of know what's going on without necessarily needing to look. And I think we really need something kind of visual like that that says, hey, here's the calendar. Hey, we're doing tree work and road maintenance until April. We've got the big project starting for water in April. We've got the rest of Central Street happening roughly in here.
Yeah.
I think we really do need like a calendar like that to bring it home for people about what goes on when and what to expect going on around town.
The big things that we do every year are, that's, that's easy because each, each season changes. I can tell you what we're going to be doing next October. I already know.
Yeah.
But there is some things that are variable in there. And those are going to be the hard ones to predict, but I can.
The expectation is that every plan, once it hits contact with the enemy, changes, right? The enemy is the unknown, but we still have the plan to start out with. So, but this is, this is a good start, thank you for this.
Okay.
And then the one other thing that we talked about is we are going to target, trying to paint my favorite crosswalk.
We're going to paint the crosswalk, yeah.
Down at White's Landing sometime between now and the end of June. This year's, this year's money.
No problem.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Anything else that we needed to talk about?
I can give you a quick little update on Central Street if you want.
That'd be awesome.
Okay, so we have, we have like a 95% final plan right now in hand. We had a meeting today, there's going to be a few little modifications and figure a few things out. But we're probably like four to five weeks from going out to bid.
Okay, so four to five weeks from going out to bid could be a while before they start work.
We're aiming for a July 1st start of construction for the highway portion.
Okay.
Hopefully.
Right, because they got to get through the water portion. Do we know approximately when we're expecting the water portion to end?
Yes. So the start date is April 29th, the completion date is June 24th.
Okay, and you're targeting a July start, like as soon, as soon as you can after that.
They should flow one right into the other, hopefully.
Okay.
We're waiting for the Mass DOT Highway Access Permit right now. That, that's going to take another 30 days potentially. So that's what's holding us up right now, pretty much.
Is there any, any cubicle wall we need to knock on in order to try to move that along?
Well, we're so close, it's not even funny. Literally, one, one thing, and they're going back to them today. The engineer's going back to Mass DOT today, so the new clock of 30 days starts literally today.
Okay.
Hopefully, they did the last one in 18 days, so hopefully this one goes quicker, too.
Okay.
But I am putting a November 1st deadline on the project so that I have time to do the paving before the winter.
Okay. That seems to be even cutting it close, but.
It's cutting it close. But if I have a, if our contract says November 1st is the deadline for the contractor, that means I can have paving scheduled for the second week of November. And like in the paving world, Thanksgiving is the real deadline.
Okay.
So right in between there, hopefully, it's cutting it close, no getting around it. But they were hesitant, the engineer was hesitant to even put a deadline on November 1st because of the supply shortages and stuff's hard to get and whatever, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I know I've seen other projects do it, but if we can have some sensitivity about maintaining access to the rear of the church, that'll be good.
Yeah, we're going to, you know, the working hours will be during the day, no weekends that I know of. It all depends how the project proceeds. If they get behind, then maybe there would be a Saturday or two, but we don't have a contractor yet, so I can't even say for sure.
Understood, okay.
While clearance is here, the bushes by the church, those are actually going to end up having to be removed. I noticed that on the plans, is there going to be, is that an issue?
Well, we have to be, we have to be able to have something to remediate that, I mean, that's.
That's fine, we can do something. Okay, I figured we'd cover that part until I.
So as long as that's in your budget, I really appreciate it.
Yeah, we'll figure out why. Yep. So the.
Everybody's a comedian, so.
The fire department, parking lot, and all the way up to the steps of the town hall are now included in the project for paving also.
Okay.
So we're not going to put new asphalt against old asphalt, you know, so it's not in good shape, so.
That's a, that's a good plan.
Yeah.
So, yes.
Under the highway discussions, would you like a briefing on the water project?
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to understand what's going to go on and what our risk would be on that, on that July 1 date, based on what your project plan is. Well, I'm asking in the context of the Central Street being part of the larger. I had asked Ryan for an overall project plan for the town for all of the stuff that he has going on for the next year. He just gave us a verbal update on the calendar for the road. I think we're okay talking about the potential for, there's a dependency between the water project and the highway project. So I'd like to understand the water project.
So we're talking with Ryan on his schedule and coordinating the two. We had a pre-construction meeting today. The contract is signed, the starting date is the 29th. We're going to start on, on the Common Street end.
Okay.
It will, it will move along quite well. We're going to complete work every, every night, it's going to, there will be no open trenches. We will not pave until the end of, of the, of the excavation work. So we will not leave any, any trenches open at night. It's going to move along very quickly, but I'll talk with you a little bit. So it looks like we're, we're really got a fast track project.
Okay, great.
And, and we should be done so that the highway work can continue as soon as we're done or shortly.
Make it almost like one contiguous project, okay?
If everything goes right, yeah.
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 Got it, okay, that's it, got it. Next, so.
Then we still have to talk Ryan before I'm Mr. Hayes.
Oh, Mr. Hayes isn't here.
Well, he isn't here.
I spoke with him earlier. And so he just, he's adamant that he prefer not to see that whole damage. And, you know, like I, like I, you and I had a discussion earlier. I get how physics work on a curve, but if we can not cut that curve quite so tight and make sure we plow all the way on the other, on the outside of the curve, I think it would go a long way to people having confidence in the process, so. But, but yeah, we've, we've got, I think we've got that covered for now. And we'll just see what we can do going forward to do better.
No, I was there last week with Mr. Hayes at the mail.
Yeah, so, but I spoke with him a bit today, so.
Anything else?
That's all I've got.
Okay.
All right, we're going to skip over warrant and budget review for now. We've got the 522 election warrant for the town elections. So Article 1, basically it's the ballot for moderator, selectman, assessor, elementary school committee, fantastic school committee, water commissioner, board of health, planning board. For both, there's two seats, one for five years and one for three years. Cemetery commissioner for three years. Two trustees for the Merritt Public Library for fi, for three years. One town clerk for three years, two constables for three years. One trustee for the shade tree fund for three years. And fundamentally, we need to post this. And the actual election is Monday, the 2nd of May.
Has to be posted 10 days before.
Needs to be posted 10 days before, so. All right, so can I get a motion to sign the election warrant?
To sign the May 2nd, 2022 election warrant.
All right, I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Where do you hold the election here?
The town hall.
Here, in the banquet hall.
Thank you.
Yep. That's done. All right, so let's go ahead and what other topics do we have? So let's skip over to cable update. And get that done. Did we also have something regarding the access to? I thought we were going to have somebody on the agenda for access to the boat launch. Did that not make the agenda?
We decided to put it on 53, remember I spoke to you about that? It was a pretty full agenda and he agreed to wait till then.
Okay, great. No, I didn't remember, else I wouldn't ask the question. Thanks. All right.
Send an email.
I'm sure, so. All right, so we're going to go ahead and skip to cable update. So we've got an update from the public access and communications committee. So appropriate salary funding for the position is, is being submitted for the 2022 annual town meeting as part of the cable access budget. The position also has to be added to the warrant for the town meeting to ensure that we're legal in hiring somebody. And then the job description and pay scale is still in work. And the committee chair and our town administrator are working on the task so that, that once the annual town meeting is out of the way, we'll be able to get that finalized and approved by the personnel committee. They're exploring the option of hiring an outside firm specializing in video production. And there's been a number of studio upgrades executed. The new computer equipment is installed and operational. There's new wifi and email accounts activated with Microsoft Office installed. The station's editing software has been activated. And it's installed both on the new editing computer and the old Edis computer. At some time over the last two weeks, the studio suffered a power outage. The APS currently installed as a backup and search protector only lasts 15 minutes. By the time the school notified the committee, the APS alarm was going off. The backup battery had drained, the internet and wifi had been kicked offline. Without the internet, we can't access the Adobe Premium Pro software to work on the backlog of videos. So Jacob is going to be at the studio, it looks like it was supposed to be this, tomorrow afternoon, to restore the internet feed and to instruct folks on how to reboot the system in the event this happens again with the APS. After that, Teleview needs to upgrade our firmware and software. They have contacted the person at Spectrum that needs to actually get the IP address and internet connection informations that Teleview can remote in and do the work they need to do in order to get Teleview to do their work. Oh, that's really interesting. So apparently Charter refused to give the IP information needed because the individual calling wasn't the authorized person, but then they wouldn't say who the authorized person is to do the work. Kelly, what do we need to do in order to clear that up with Charter as to who the authorized person is to get the IP information? Or do you think Jacob, Jacob can just get, get a ping response that'll identify what that IP is?
He should actually be able to get online and just get the address. I mean, I've seen, I've seen that happen. I don't know why the IP address is secret.
Yeah, that's very. That's very bizarre, actually. So there's a ticket in with Teleview to see if they can access the router using the IP address that they had historically. I, I think Jacob actually probably can figure out a way to ping that hardware and find out what the IP address is. A bunch of old studio equipment and furniture has come out of the space. Kelly, if. Ryan, you, would you mind getting approached about helping to move some of the heavier stuff out of the studio that needs to go? I know that we use you guys as a moving company for the town, but are you okay with helping with some of that stuff? There's a couple of heavy, like, old desks and some, some large CRT monitors, old TVs that need to get moved out of there, the kind that they're two men left just because they're. So if Sharon, if you could reach out and just. That would be great. Let's see here. The near term focus is going to be getting the information up on YouTube because we do have, what, like about a four or five month backlog right now? And then. And then there's, there is going to be some investment in new camera and mic system that's compatible with doing live stream based off of the rest of this year's funds. Let's see here. And then there's a, a timeline and summary of the information here as of the 18th that I'm not going to go into detail. Would you like a copy of this? Would you like a copy of this?
You have a man's motion?
Um, sure.
So, I was up here three months ago, four months ago, or back last fall, I don't know what the date was. You told me you were gonna have this thing up and running.
Yep.
February, what happened?
Everything just took longer than what we expected.
It's been four years since this thing's been off.
Everything took longer than what we expected.
Four years?
Yep.
If your car broke down, is it gonna take four years to fix your car? No, how about your lawnmower to cut your lawn? You're gonna get your lawn cut, you're gonna get your lawnmower fixed. We got all this equipment, it was brand-new four years ago, four or five years ago. Now we're talking about all new equipment again. So I guess my main question is, when are we gonna have cable access back on TV?
I'm not gonna give you a date.
Well, now you're talking about hiring somebody. We allocated money for this position, I think, two years ago, I believe, at the town meeting.
So unfortunately, at the time that we allocated the money.
Right.
One, we allocated, I think, something like nine thousand dollars, which was not adequate to hire somebody for the work that we're described. And unfortunately, uh, 'cause I'm gonna be frank with you, a couple of meetings ago, I'm like, why haven't we started this process yet? And fundamentally, what it came down to is when we voted at town meeting, we did one of the three steps we needed in order to actually establish the position in the town, okay? One of the reasons why we've now brought in a town administrator is because when you have amateurs running stuff, you make mistakes. And, and all due respect, you know, every single one of us, you know, we have people on the personnel board that try to do a good job. Selectmen in the personnel board didn't have the best communication in terms of what the requirements were to have a position existing in the bylaw for us to be legal to hire, okay? So we voted yes at the town meeting, hey, we're gonna have this position. We didn't set a grade, we didn't set a step, we didn't set any of the requirements, and we didn't actually change the personnel bylaw to create the position. So, at this point, we're going back and having to redo the work associated with that because when we did it the first time, we didn't basically cross every T and dot every I to, to do what we needed to do in order to have that position be fully legal embedded in the.
Yeah, that's all good and Danny, but we've been running this TV station with amateurs. I ran it, I was on that committee for seven years. And when it went down, we had it up and running within two days. And if we couldn't figure it out, we called Charter in. And they came in and helped, cut them members, and we got it back up and running. So, back to my same question, four years, it's unacceptable.
That's not a question, that's a statement.
Do we have a committee?
What's that?
Do we have a committee? Cable Access Committee? Currently, do we have one?
Currently, we have one person.
And who's that?
It's Sharon Miller.
Okay, and, and we have no one else but her?
Currently, no.
Okay, so, it's been four years and I just, I, I, I mean, you know, this just keeps going on and on. Now you're talking about hiring someone, maybe we'll get somebody. Before it was broken equipment. When, when, you know, we gotta come to a head here and get, get, get it back on again for the people. You know, it just seems like we're just stumbling down the road, stumbling down the road, nothing's getting done again. So you have some kind of a projection?
So I've got your opinion, I.
Side of my opinion, it's fact that things have been off for four years. That's unacceptable.
Well, for two years.
Charter's been giving us money, every year we're supposed to be using this money.
So for the last, fundamentally, for two years of that, we weren't videotaping because we were in a, a remote environment and those meetings were getting recorded views, okay? So, I'll be very frank with you, during a period of time when we were doing a hundred percent remote meetings, it was not a priority to go after putting stuff back on Charter because it was getting recorded and made available. So, so just that, that block of time was like lost time, okay?
Right, but.
Things are, things are a little bit different in trying to get some of these people onsite during this period of time. I get your feedback, okay? I agree, it's been too long, okay? We've taken a lot of the steps, if you go and compare that to the piece of paper I handed to you last night, a lot of the activities that were cited in there that were prerequisites to getting that online have happened. There's been progress. So, I hear what you're saying. On certain level, I think. The good side of it is, we've made some progress, okay? We're taking the pre-steps required to get the stuff back online. We're engaging some of the professionals in order to, to get the IT stuff figured out, okay? Come back, come back in two weeks and the two are red, okay? A lot of the activity related to getting the stuff back online is planned in the near term, okay? But I'm not gonna give you.
Okay, so you get all the equipment, if then what's gonna happen? If all the equipment is, is good again, then what are we gonna do? And are some of it operated? We're gonna get some money here to do it? We're getting money from Charter, and that money's supposed to be allocated to keep this station up and running.
Agreed, but illegal. So the money is still there and we, we will have it to spend to get this stuff.
Okay, I'm gonna stay on it, will you put me down, will you put me on the agenda?
You want them to put them on the agenda?
Uh, another thing, I thought, off, off-subject, but.
Uh, if it's not on the agenda right now. That's gonna actually be on the side of the unit. All right, um, so I do wanna acknowledge that we have two members of the advisory committee in here, and I'm assuming that you came in because of the budget and the warrant being on the agenda. But we are missing one of the Board of Selectmen. Um, are there, are there specific aspects of the budget that you had wanted to discuss tonight? Okay. Um, I don't wanna disrespect your time since you showed up, though, so, um.
Sarah, if I may.
Yep.
I think one, one of the topics for discussion, and I believe I stopped late starting in as well, is the, um, possible for the clerk, for the boards and committees, for making.
Okay.
I mean, I'm hoping that you might, certainly, I do wanna go through one or two. One, I mean, one of the warrants being, being part of the budget that's not, not stood away. It would have been, uh, to. So what I've done to retrieve an upper position, got one. First of all, to conservation, to the board planning board, would have. And then, when that was busy doing those specific, um, technical tasks such as posting meetings and hearings and making sure bodies are notified and following all of the, um, appropriate statutory regulations for that particular board that they're working for, would be available to help, um, other boards and committees maybe with their minutes, um, and other public task filing. And they would also be available in the town hall during the week to allow people to come in and get things, uh, copies of their commitments, copies of zoning decisions, where traffic systems, um, you know, just a plethora of things that have been made available that, um, won't be available to the. Just nature, he runs around and he assists everybody with all of these requests during the day. And he's, he's not running for board, huh?
Right.
So he would have asked us to use his same records and the opposite stuff. His position would also take up the slot where he would be rightfully, you know, allowed to let go since he won't be holding the position. Um, they have some very valid reasons to allow you to keep their clerk. But I can pull all of the clerk funding that's already in the budget to fund the position. Without, so, so when you combine all of the already pre-existing clerk line items that no one is using or that is being used very, very minimally, there's enough there for fifteen hours a week for somebody to be at the town hall, which would be two-eight-hour days or four-always, however, how we wanna, you know.
Yeah, I mean, if, if they're gonna do, if they're gonna do meetings, it probably couldn't be two-eight-hour days. It would probably have to.
Actually attending the meetings, the meetings could look be recorded so that they could transcribe them and.
Ah.
Make it so that they would actually not have to go out at night and split their time.
Oh, that makes sense.
Fully available to residents while they're here.
Okay, and that makes sense. And then it also makes them available, say, if there's like, and, and I don't know, you know, say there's something that, that, for conservation, can, conservation, where they have to reach out to the state or what have you, they can do it during business hours, that sort of thing.
Exactly.
Gotcha.
They can, they can work with DDP and NOLIs, they can, um, assist planning and, you know, defining the fuses and getting a fuses list and, and, um, doing the mailings. So, there are a lot of reasons that work field actually needs this position that allows for those services to provide, and more efficiency for overworked boards who don't really have time because they work jobs and.
Right.
Basically volunteering.
Yeah, I just, I just had a contact from the Conservation Committee, um, asking, I think, about this sort of thing, about what kind of clerical support we could offer them, so.
So, everybody who's on board, like I said, but like Board of Health is, is, very much wants to keep their contact book. She has a great relationship with, um, the other people that they work with. Mike can speak to that. She's extremely knowledgeable, this is her field of expertise. She's full-time doing this in the town, so she's well worth keeping. However, we're going from adding an additional two thousand dollars into the budget to adding an additional eight thousand dollars into the budget to cre- create the position without the, um, Board of Health clerk's salary being pulled in. I don't know if that'll make a difference at town meeting, but.
Mike, did you wanna speak to that?
Um, yeah, just to reiterate what, um, Kelly said is, um, we did discuss the evidence meeting. We do, we'd like to retain our clerk, she enjoys working with us, established good relationship with our engineer and our, um, Board of Health agent, and so that's, it really works out well. But Kelly's right, you know, I've been the guy that's been going back and forth for records requests up there, so if we could get somebody that could be here during the day to do that, that would be helpful. You know, um, to Board Health Office or anywhere else. Is that, is that what you're, you're looking for?
Yeah, I'm just trying, I was just trying to understand, so, so, so Kelly, what you're saying is that there's what, currently six thousand dollars of that, of that fifteen thousand dollars would have been coming from the Board of Health budget?
Correct, it's a little over fourteen and, uh, a little over six would be coming from Board of Health, so we need to, to put in the difference.
Okay. Um, and advisory, did, had, had you all reviewed this, the, uh, article for the consolidated?
I haven't shared the articles because I wanted you to review them first, but I did, they, they do see that in the, as a line item in the budget, as a new line item.
Okay, so that was in the budget as well as in the articles?
Yes, and I wasn't sure how the town wanted to handle it, so it's in both places and will be pulled out of one depending on how the town typically votes for this type of, um, situation.
Hmm, okay. So.
I'm in full support of this, I think we.
Yeah, I would agree, I, I think.
Full support.
I, I think, uh, I think the biggest, uh, I think the, I, I think historically for something like this, that's kind of a structural change, even though typically it would be funded at the budget line, I think in order to have a dis- the appropriate discussion on it, we probably wanna keep it in the warrant?
Mm-hmm, that makes sense to me, I mean, it needs to vote it as, as a position.
Right.
In the warrant, and you always do the budget prior to the remainder of the warrant, that's Article Two, I mean, warrant, so you don't wanna double fund it.
Exactly.
You know, you can, you can put a hold on it and then vote it in the article just for the people who see it as in the budget, but it's probably cleaner if we just do it like.
Yeah, I'd almost, what I'd almost rather do is, and this is a discussion that we could have, you know, is, is that we do the budget, do the budget sheet, but then, I think one thing we haven't historically provided to the townspeople is a sheet that says, here's our articles, here's a short title for that article, here's what that article cost is, so the actual bottom line, like, what it is if you vote everything in the article or in the warrant, what it actually comes out to be, so that you don't have eight, you know.
That will be part of the budget presentation.
Okay, all right. Yeah, so we may just want copies of the presentation available for people at town meeting as well. You know, just a hard copy of whatever you're, you're gonna be presenting, so.
Now, when is that, May twentieth, you're gonna do that, Kelly?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, so. Now, do, is the budget, has the budget gone over to the advisory or no?
I shared the link with the advisory group, um, uh, and so that they could see what I was working with.
Okay.
I have no idea if they've had an opportunity to take a look at it or avail themselves of it, but.
Have you all had a chance to review it?
We have had a chance to review it, there are still some things that we are working through. Um, the, the all-boards clerk and, uh, technology line, uh, which involve rearranging budget items. It doesn't change the total budget in the right instance, but it's combining some budget lines. We're still wrapping our head around those. So, we, we have, I would say we have not finished our review of what Kelly shared with us, um, almost two weeks ago, which she recently put us.
And Tom, you were looking for via email, we've been discussing with Lori, trying to see what the town actually voted and what they spent. If you click on the second tab in the budget worksheet, you'll see the history and of the town since two thousand and eighteen. Every single line item, every single article voted the way it was voted at the meeting, and then what they actually spent at the end of the year.
Okay.
So it's already done, so all you can do is go look at it. It may not be easy to read, it works with my head, not necessarily anybody else's email.
Uh, I'm familiar with being in that situation, but, uh, okay, we will take a look at it. It's been mostly a, a man with issue among our members.
That never happens.
As far as the technology, um, article goes, it's not an article, but the, the technology line is, I've asked every school department when they came to their software and what they have put aside for, uh, technology repairs and whatnot, and combined into a single technology expense, and pulled that amount out of each budget. And if you go on the actual spreadsheet, you'll see, there's a tiny triangle over in the upper right-hand corner, and my notes are in there, explains, um, single item, what line it came out of and where and how much it was.
Beth, I think I saw the online reading comments you were gonna use.
No, I know.
Okay.
No, I was, I was, I was, I was doing the, I forgot my reading glasses, and this is printed up really tiny, and just trying to look at what the bottom line looked like for the year, that's all. So, I knew, I wasn't looking for what you guys.
That is only the operating budget, the warrantances that have been flowing in from people, if they're not funded with free cash, will absolutely change the bottom line for the budget.
Oh, understood, but.
Not done with free cash or a transfer from pre-existing funds increases the budget.
No, understood, that, that goes without, that goes without saying.
It sounds like there was some confusion in some emails that were going across, so I just wanted to clarify that for you.
Yeah, and, and, and that's one of the things we have to be aware of, so like, like, for instance, and we didn't number the articles, but the article relative to the all-boards clerk position, like you said, if we were gonna hire somebody for fifteen hours a week, right, um, and if we're not gonna include the Board of Health budget in that, then it's gonna have an impact on the raise and appropriate.
Correct.
Versus, if, if it included the Board of Health work, then it would, um, it would be a, a net neutral, fundamentally.
It would be a total net neutral because I threw in an extra two thousand dollars, so that would be up to four fifteen hours.
Okay.
So they would be a two thousand dollar increase to the bottom line.
Okay.
But, that's why the difference would be eight thousand and not just the six from the Board of Health.
Got it.
And these are, this is money the town has been voting for a few years now, in most cases, it's not.
It's been, it's been turned back, yep.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Um, I see the, the cable coordinator position in there. We've got some general budgeting for them as well. budgeting for them as well, um, I'm presuming the library repair and maintenance would be, um, we'd be going from free cash.
That would make sense, if the roof, it's a one-time expense.
Yeah.
If there are any normal maintenance expenses in that line, in that article, they should absolutely be, they're put in the budget, because you do not fund returning expenses with cash.
Understood.
And as I was looking this over, Kelly, too, I, I had noticed like different reoccurring things, how you said that this should be in the budget and not be in articles.
Some of them, yes, sometimes there's line painting every single year, every single year, that's a recurring expense, now, I understand that it's in an article, in case the line painting can't be done within the fiscal year.
Correct.
However, if it's contracted for, they can encumber the lines, and if it's not done during the fiscal year, they have the following year's line painting budget to use.
Yeah, I think, I think historically.
There's not reason for that one to be an article unless there's some strange clue, you know.
I, I, I personally think that's a good idea to put that in the budget instead of putting these in articles, like, the same thing like the, um, protective clothing that the, the fire department puts in for every year, it should be in the budget, not as an article, I think these are all good ideas that you have, things that we should have been doing.
Yeah, you know, I, I understand, I understand where you're coming from, but I think there's also, there's also some value in, um, that the article does give you some flexibility about whether a, an item goes to raise and appropriate versus, um, uh, transfer or borrow, so.
Well, that, that's true, and, and that's, that's perfectly acceptable if it's not a recurring expense.
Right.
If it's a recurring expense, it's a steam expense every single year, just a different price, it belongs in a budget, if it's a one-time capital expenditure, that's what all the best practices, the V O R recommend that free cash only be spent on things of that future, so the roof repair and the, the maintenance article for the library, perfect use of an article. Um, protective gear, no, because it's done every single year, it's something that we spend every single year, that is an absolute recurring cost, now, it allows you to not fund that particular, or, or, but why would you not fund protecting your fire people or, you can't see why you wouldn't do that.
Right, right.
Line painting, no, maybe we can have one line painting issued, so we don't do it, but, again, if it's a recurring, normal expense of a department, it should be in the budget, and that's just what the V O R recommends and the best practices, I've seen towns use their free cash to fund operating expenses, and now here, it hasn't gotten out of hand, but what happens is when they don't have free cash, all of these operating expenses go belly up, and then they wind up looking for an override, because they can't fund their operating budget, because they didn't keep up with it, so they didn't pass the requisite, uh, increase annually, because it's not part of the base budget.
Yeah, I see where you're going with that, I can, I can see that.
It's entirely your call, it's entirely the town's call, it's just, it's just a really dangerous point to fund, uh, recurring expenses.
Beth?
Yep.
One concern, I, I understand Kelly's point, and I concur with you, my one concern is that we want you to pay attention to the impact of this change to the tax levy, right now, we have these expenses that we're funding through free cash, we'll use the fire protective here as an example, we're funding it through, the levy is funding the operating budget, the free cash coming out of that operating budget then pays for protective gear, if we change it so the speculative years paid for out of the operating budget, and we just add that line item, that's going to increase the levy, and we're still gonna generate the same amount of free cash without the use of it, and so therefore.
It will not generate any free cash.
So, if, I would, I would like us, as part of this change, to look for ways to tighten the budget elsewhere, so that we generate less free cash now that we don't need it, and so, and it's, it's surprising.
Kelly, you have a comment, too?
Okay, so part of your free cash that's being generated is from an excellent active collector, in, in tragedy, who was on after tax title, that's part of your free cash.
Yeah, and, and.
The tax rate hasn't gone lower than, that's, that's just money you weren't anticipating, but it came in during the fiscal year, it wasn't, um, anticipated.
Hey, hey Kelly, I also have another thing to propose, and, and this is, this is actually gonna be funny if we wind up doing this, because I, I, I think Mr. Cook will probably like either throw me a party or run me out of town, but we, historically speaking, there's been a lot of ac- activism from the floor to do a, uh, applying free cash to lower the tax rate, so, I, I think a, a middle ground would be, we move the items to the operational budget, but we consider at least a transitional period where at least a portion of it, we vote to, to apply some of it to lower, apply some of the free cash, a small amount, covering.
What's a small amount, you apply $100,000 of your free cash to lower the tax rate, it goes down 30 cents.
Yep, we've talked about that before.
Now you've got 1/3 of your free cash left.
I'm sorry, you said how much to go down?
You can do 100,000, I mean, so that's not actually a second quarter.
No, yeah, I was gonna say that, that's not even, it's not even a quarter this year, I don't think, um.
You've got 3 over 400, but that's not, is that normal, I mean, you told me.
So, ti- typically, typically.
Your board has gone years with no free cash at all.
Typically, if you average it over the years, we're rerun between two and three.
Okay, so that would be a reasonable amount to, to spend.
Yep.
During any meeting would be what you run typically.
Yep.
And then you ferret the rest away.
Absolutely.
Um.
So, but, but my, but my thought it would be, in, in this instance, as we're doing like a transitional period between putting this stuff on the warrant and funding it all through free cash, and putting it on raise and appropriate.
Talking about big numbers and putting it on, putting it in the, in the budget, we're looking at how much for the line painting, $1,200?
Uh, seven, five, seven, five, 7,500.
Okay, and then you have how much for the, um, another, say, seven, just say another 7,500.
Well, I, yeah.
For the, um, equipment.
For the, uh, equipment, yep, so it's about 15, that's only about 15,000, part of it would depend on, on if we fund road reconstruction or not, do you have that money earmarked for anything?
Well, reconstruction, that one, I don't, I don't have a seat problem, that one's staying, because that gives you a lot of flexibility, I'm looking at these two little ones.
Okay.
Into the budget, not the bigger ones where the road.
Okay.
Construction, uh, because you, you have road maintenance, I believe, in your budget?
Yep.
No.
No.
Everything.
Is road maintenance, is Ryan still there?
Yeah, Ryan's still here, everything comes out of road reconstruction, he doesn't have a road expense, he has a general expense budget for the highway department, but he doesn't have like a road.
Oh, okay.
Line in his budget.
It all goes through.
It all, it all goes through that road reconstruction account, and we do tend to build it up and then do a big project and spend it down, build it up.
And, and that makes sense to keep that as an article.
Okay, I guess I, I guess I.
Back and forth from the different parties on, on what should and shouldn't be an article, and, and I agree that we should keep the building one and road reconstruction as an article, but the line.
Okay, I, I misunderstood, cause I.
The one that should go into the budget, and if they, I mean, obviously, I've no doubt they're gonna use their budget properly.
Right, and, and I'm, and I misunderstood, cause I thought you were saying that the, the building repair also should be a recurring.
I had asked initially, why are these here and why are they not in the budget, I thought the building were gonna one, and I spoke with Brenda about the wood, or general maintenance of the building.
Oh, okay.
Capital projects.
Yeah, typically it's small capital projects, to be honest, it's things like.
Same with the road reconstruction, that, if that's the only money the town would decide to work on the roads, that should absolutely stay in articles, because it rules over.
Okay.
Tom, you okay with that?
Yeah, I mean, if the, if, if, if the articles that we're looking at moving into the operating budget are not a big chunk of money, then there's less need to offset it.
I'm sorry, could you repeat what you said, it's not all because of where it's located?
Sorry, I, I was agreeing with you that it's probably something we can live with.
Yeah, for the.
If you don't wanna do it this year, that's fine, I'm just advising you that, that this is not a good plan to fund recurring expenses.
No, uh, understood, and.
Every little part is, and I'm smiling, though.
Thanks, Kelly, well, and plus, like you said, we're not doing it on, on any big dollars, it's small dollars, so it might be a good, it might be a good transition year, so, um.
Excuse me, so, do we have any, any consensus on this, um, municipal clerk, how the board is gonna go, are you gonna be reviewing the making decisions tonight?
No.
On the board review?
We're, we're not gonna, we're not gonna make decisions tonight, I wanted to get some discussion out of the way, but we're gonna need to revisit it at a future meeting, cause we're missing Adam, and I'd like him to be part of the, the full dialogue.
So, you're not gonna make any decisions on a place of any article board tonight?
No.
And plus, Kelly should be with us also.
Okay, so you anticipate doing that next week?
We're targeting next week.
It depends on whether or not that one's available.
That's true, did we have confirmation from him yet, whether he's available?
He didn't say.
Okay.
He said he would update his calendar, when I look at his calendar from here, I can't see, it all says pending, and doesn't say anything that, that's a, that tells me whether he's available or not, so.
Okay, all right.
So, if we met, it would be on a Tuesday again, like a week from tonight.
Yep.
Um, I don't believe he's available, he said he was not available at the beginning of the week.
When, do we?
If we do meet, it would be later in the week.
Do we wanna target a Thursday, since that's when Advisory is here, and we could go through it all together?
That works for me, if it works for Advisory and everyone else.
You guys wanna do a joint meeting Thursday and next week?
Thursday and next week, the 28th.
Sure.
Yes.
And I will, um, I, I need to add the extra articles that came.
Okay.
Over the last couple of days.
Okay.
To the warrant, and then I will send, um, the updated warrant out to everybody before Thursday, but I'm here in school, and I'm not sure when I'm gonna have time, um, so it may not come till Wednesday.
Understood, we're warned, at least, that's good.
Will you be available to be what's, others here with us?
Yes, I, I, I'm closed for the week today, and that's why I'm not there, I'm not expecting you to be there this evening as well, but.
But I have to tell you.
But I'm not going really late, I will be.
The 28th is my anniversary, and we're going to a concert with my husband, so I won't be able to be here the 28th.
Karen, Karen will be here.
Karen is not available at 28th.
Okay.
It's my anniversary.
You're not available either.
Jeff isn't available.
Okay.
But we're going out.
What about Wednesday? Is the Advisory there?
Is it, is the building open on Wednesday, or is there somebody got a meeting Wednesday? Cause Wednesday's a heavy meeting night.
Yeah, I'll go check right now.
Yeah, actually, we don't have a bunch of big dollar warrant articles, actually, we've got the, we've got the old K P bill, that we have plenty of money, because you've been saving us so much money this year on our legal fees.
Really, it's, it's not really a lot up on here for money, no.
We've got, uh, the all clerk position, we've got cable coordinator, but that comes out of peg funds, we've got.
Yes.
The regular operating expenses, but that comes out of peg funds, so then we've got the library, road reconstruction, um, ambulance, just cause we have to vote it that way, so the, really the big things will be like, I think for the 350th anniversary.
Yep.
Um, the town hall phone system.
Road reconstruction.
Yeah, road reconstruction, the town hall phone system, and then allocating the money, even though we're only gonna spend it if we get the grant, um, for Lewis Field.
Yes, and then there's a 75,000 for the school roof.
Yep, 75 for the school roof, and then 50 for O P E B, to get started on that.
And then the other, there are two that are on late, depending on how much is 1,000 of free cash.
Yep.
And are you wanting allocated?
Capital versus general, okay, yeah, so that'll, that'll put us in a good position, I think, from a standpoint of getting our, our, um, do you have what our stabilization fund, overall fund levels are?
No, not, not at this time, no.
Okay.
So, the articles that were given to me, um, and the second one, here, wait, no, computer, no.
Council on Aging has a meeting at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, but I might be able to talk to them and ask them to change it, because I think they're pretty flexible.
Council on Aging, they have two meetings in a row, and, but I might be able to, they might be able to change it, cause they're pretty flexible.
They made it correct.
Yeah, during the day, the day before, and the.
David Carr, I have an article from the fire department for $10,000 for fire station improvement, um. Want to, for, for the police chief to get another vehicle.
That makes sense.
One for $42,000 to replace the overhead doors of the fire station, and 22,000, that's not 42,000, right?
You did.
And 22,000 for semi-automatic external defibrillators, and another for 6,200 for protective clothing and equipment, and that's what I was telling you, that I, I have another number from him, but I could be misremembering it on that one.
Okay.
And then, um, the 25,000 for Brenda, and.
Brenda Medeville?
Yeah, for the library, yep.
No, cause we have two Brenda's.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry, sorry.
That's okay.
Um, and then we have requests from cable, but that's coming out of the cable.
Right.
Yeah.
Funds, so that's.
Okay, so, we're gonna punt to, we're gonna reach out and see if Wednesday we can get the space.
But you know tomorrow.
And then, uh, um.
Now, are we gonna discuss the budget also, or just the items?
Um, what, at the next meeting? We'll do that at the next meeting.
Next meeting, we're gonna do this, too.
Yeah, and I'll get, get it in a format we can actually read it.
Beth, this is next Wednesday, the 27th?
Yeah.
All right, let me check with the, uh, my committee members and see if everyone's available.
Yeah, if you, if you could, because.
I'll post it in message out tonight, and I'll board the prepare.
Let me know in the morning, and I'll check, see if they can switch, if you're available.
And if not, we'll start to be getting danger close, but we could punt it out to the following Thursday, if, if Wednesday doesn't work for your committee, we could all, always push it to the 5th of May.
Mm-hmm, or we could, uh, do a joint on the May, on your May.
May 3rd, yeah, so let's, let's get those options in front of people, and let's, let's just plan it to be a powwow.
Okay.
So, um, is there anything else that we need to cover tonight? So, the rest is like minutes and, and reports, I think we could wait until next week to do that.
Were we gonna set up meeting dates tonight, you said?
No, the meeting dates are always the first and the third, Tuesday and.
Oh, okay, yeah, oh, I cracked two of a second, you said.
Well, we're gonna decide if we needed another one next week, but we're gonna decide that, we don't, we're gonna decide that outside of here, fundamentally, we're gonna take a look at people's availability and get, get a meeting put on the calendar, so, all right, um, in the absence of, um, any other critical business, um, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I will make a motion to adjourn at 7:45.
All right, I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.